of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Vice Chair Andrew Eric, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council, we are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with these projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Farrick.
Here.
Commissioner Sillin.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Vice Chair Eric, and I am present, so we have six commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Eric and members of the planning commission. So just one report from staff. So next Tuesday, December 10th, the council will hold its reorganization meeting. So it's a council meeting, and at that meeting, the council, it's mostly ceremonial, there will be the reorganization of the council, recognition of our two outgoing council members, and swearing-in of our new council members from districts three and five, as well as a recognition of Mayor Taylor for her service during 2024 as mayor. So the community is encouraged to attend, there'll be the reorg meeting, followed by a small reception or a reception after. It is being held at the Bell Haven Community Campus, so just a note of the location compared to here at council chambers. So just encourage anyone, any members of the community to attend, planning commissioners as well. So that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to take any questions.
Do commissioners have any questions about that announcement? Okay, thank you, Mr. Prada. Do commissioners have any additional reports or announcements? Okay, then we will move to item D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. To learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk this evening, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Vice Chair Eric. So as the vice chair mentioned, during the public comment period, members of the public will have three minutes to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen if you are participating by Zoom. And staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, click star nine on your keypad, and that will notify staff that you would like to give a public comment. If you are in council chambers tonight, please fill in a comment card and hand it to me. If there are multiple people who wish to speak on your account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we'll make sure that each person has a chance to speak. And with that, I will hand it back to Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Let's open the public comment period.
So I do have a couple hands raised. We'll start with Kelly Traver, and then go on to John Selling. Give me one second here.
Kelly, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I live two blocks from the development that is being considered by the planning commission on the old Sunset Magazine area. It is probably the most egregious development in Menlo Park since I've lived here in 1984, since 1984. I'm two blocks away. This is a 39-foot tower. It would be larger than anything in California between San Francisco to LA. It is partly housing, which I support, partly hotel, partly 600,000-square-foot retail and office space. It would bring in 3,000 employees. It only accommodates for 40% of the parking that it should have. So this is such an abomination, I just implore you to stop it. It would make traffic impossible. It already is difficult for firefighters, police, you know, to get through when traffic is really high. Crossing the street is already hard, so safety concerns, especially with kids walking home from school. Parking would overflow to all the streets of Menlo Park and Palo Alto, which already is a problem. And I just, and it's right on the creek, it's right on San Francisco Creek. So environmentally, it's a disaster. So please, please do not approve this, or if you approve it, I realize we need affordable housing, and, you know, I'd be okay if it was five stories max, but anything beyond that, right now, everything is about one to two stories. So new developments have had five stories, so, fine, but I don't know where these developers that are proposing this think that this is okay. It's a blight on the community, and frankly, it just, all of our property values will go down. I'll probably sell my house if this actually comes to pass. No one will want to live in this area, so the town will get less money from property values because everything will plummet, but more than that, it's just, this is such a not well-fought-out proposal at all. So I implore you, put the most stringent evaluation of environmental protections, given it's right by the creek, and really look at it, and then please have a lot of research done on the parking issues, the traffic snarl that we will have, it's on Willow and Middlefield, and it's already difficult. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker will be John Selling. John, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, the previous speaker stole my thunder, but I am also calling in to speak about 80 Willow Road, the Sunset Magazine site, and also speaking against it. It's funded out of this country by a Russian oligarch, and being developed by a developer who's not local either. And we, those particular streets at Willow and Middlefield Road, Middlefield Road is four lanes in Menlo Park, and when you cross Willow, it's only two lanes. And as you go into Menlo Park on Willow, it's only one lane, and Willow is one lane coming, or excuse me, two lanes going into Menlo Park and two lanes leaving Menlo Park. And the estimated number of cars that are coming in with 3,000 employees being there, that will be their capacity, is just unbelievable. So our community is not ready for something like this. We do realize that we need affordable housing, and that's fine, but in this case, they're bringing in 3,000 employees and only have 665 residential units, so they're making the housing deficit even worse than it is. So it's not helpful. And it just, it will not, I also live maybe three blocks away, and it also will just make it incredibly difficult. These houses, as you know, everything there is very expensive, we're personally worried about what's going to happen to our neighborhood, which is a beautifully quiet, wonderful neighborhood. San Francisco, San Francisco Creek has already been overflowing, it overflowed last year, it has had some big overflows right at that intersection of Middlefield Road, and this, you know, I can't believe you could actually conceive of building something in a flood zone there when, just a year ago, it, the creek overflowed in that exact area at that intersection. Anyway, we know it'll be developed, hopefully, something, you know, I was thinking three stories high, there's only seven acres there. Other areas in Menlo Park that have had more acreage have kept it to five stories. So I, again, plead with you, please, please tone this down, if not prevent it altogether. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
This will be our last call for public comment, general public comment. I don't have any more hands raised or any comment cards.
Okay, I think people have had enough time, so I will close public comment. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Tonight, there is one item on the consent calendar. Mr. Turner, can you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item and open public comment for the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you. Once again, if you would like to give public comment on the consent calendar, please click the raise hand button if you are participating by Zoom, or star nine if you are participating on the phone, or if you're in person, please fill out a comment card. At the moment, I do not have any hands raised and no comment cards for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll give it five more seconds. Okay, assuming there are no more hands raised, we will close public comment for the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull the item from the consent calendar? Okay, in that case, I would appreciate a motion. Commissioner Farrick.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Assuming no questions, we will move to a vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that makes six yes and one absent, so the consent calendar passes. Okay, we will now move on to item F1, the first public hearing item. In this agenda item, the planning commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to partially demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and construct first- and second-story additions, and conduct interior modifications to an existing non-conforming structure on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District at 351 Barton Place. The proposed project would remove the non-conforming portions of the existing structure, and the additions would exceed 50% of the existing floor area, and is considered equivalent to a new structure. The planning commission may determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, for the record, wanted to inform the public and the commission that I've been made aware that I live within 1,000 feet of the project, however, as I'm not within 500 feet of the project and feel that I can be perfectly impartial as to this, I do not plan on recusing myself.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a presentation from the applicant, but before that, Mr. Hoaglightner, are there any updates from staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, the architect Carol McAlion is here, along with the property owner, Mr. Mark Burbidge. She will be giving a short presentation. There are no additional items to add to the staff report, we've received no additional communication from neighbors since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Hoaglightner. Please go ahead.
Sorry. We're gonna make sure your mic is on.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, Vice Chair.
Sorry.
It's on, you may need to pull it a little closer.
Closer?
Ah, that's better. Okay, sorry, please go ahead.
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the commission. My name is Carol McAlion, architectural designer and applicant for the project 351 Barton Place. The owners, Krista and Mark Burbidge, are here present tonight. They are expecting their second child, which is why they are eager to extend their home. I'll be presenting a short presentation with a couple of slides. So on this small photo, you can see the one-story house, which is built on a substandard lot. It consists of two bedrooms, one bath, living room, dining area, and an open kitchen. The existing living space will remain as is, and the existing garage deck and carport, which is in the back of the garage, will be demolished. These are non-conforming and encroaching on the side setback. The project will involve building two-story addition on one side of the existing house, as you can see on the larger picture, and extending the front porch to create a junction between the existing and the new sections. The exterior finish will be whiteboard and button siding with black frame windows for a modern farmhouse look. Second slide. Okay, so on the second slide, you can see that the two-story addition will, it will improve the functionality and flow of the existing first floor by extending with a family room, a powder room, a pantry, and a laundry area, and on the second floor, creating a new bedroom, two new bedrooms and one bathrooms. So the second floor is designed to minimize the visual intrusion on the neighbors and to protect everyone's privacy. The proposed design will allow my clients to remain in their home during construction as the existing living space will not be altered. We hope the project will be approved to accommodate the needs of this growing family. I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. At this time, do any commissioners have clarifying questions? Commissioner Beruzzi.
Whoa, was that me? A quick question. I was reading that there's one neighbor who was concerned about privacy and that the homeowners were talking about using blinds, I think it was in the stairwell, there were windows, and I'm wondering, I was just curious when I thought about that, what the function of the windows was, was it light, was it something else? I was wondering if you considered using some kind of glazing or something that would permit light to come through, because I could imagine that, I mean, I guess when I hear the word blinds, I'm envisioning those like gross Phoenician things that people have that get dusty, and thinking that those might not allow light, and I was curious what kinds of things you'd considered, and if blinds were, where you landed, or what?
Decided yet on a design for the blinds, but it will be something to screen, and there is going to be, so there is large trees that provide some screening already, and the arborist is also getting some recommendation on additional screening to provide more privacy between the new structure and the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. Are there any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. I think this is a question for staff about the condition of approval with the two-foot separation for the driveway and the property line. I was wondering if that's similar to our last meeting, where it's something that's already in the, required by code, and we're just adding it for clarification, or is this like sort of a unusual requirement that is being added?
Thank you for that question. So the, it is part of the code requirements, it was not included in the plan set, so it's added as a condition of approval, so we can bring this forward to the planning commission.
Instead of modifying the plans?
We'd already published the plans, so we add the condition to just make sure that during the construction process that they submit a set of plans that meets the zoning code requirements.
Got it, okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. Along the lines of Commissioner Beruzzi's question, I guess my follow-up might be for the applicant through the chair, vice chair, if I may. I saw on the photos or renderings that there are screening trees, are those going to be removed or disturbed during construction, or will they remain?
So the screening trees will remain? Is it the ones that are in the front yard, or the, next to the?
They look to be on the, along the side of the new addition side of the house.
Okay, so.
I just didn't know.
It's, I think all the screening trees are on the neighbor's side, so they will remain, and they will be, there is few recommendations from the arborists to water these trees during construction, to be careful about digging and protecting the roots, so all these are conditions on the approval, and, yeah, sorry.
Got it.
They're taking in consideration protecting the neighbor's trees.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other additional clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this item and start the comment period?
Yes, if you would like to give public comment on this item, and you are attending via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are joining via phone, please click star nine, or if you are in council chambers, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. At the moment, I see one hand, so Rob Trice, you should be able to unmute yourself. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, so I am the neighbor with the concerns about the intruding light. Let me say generally, though, we're supportive of this project, we want to support this growing family, and Mark and Krista and Carolyn have run a great process, so our only concern about this project, so we will now have eight new lights coming in from the first and second story onto our property, onto our, what we call our backyard, and it will look under the London Plain trees into our glass hallway, which includes two bedrooms and a bathroom. We recognize that the design has been designed to minimize the amount of the upstairs, all of the corner windows are not looking directly into the bathrooms we have on the second floor, and we appreciate that. So our only request is that, you know, the blinds can be taken down by the next owner. So to the point of the council member, are there other issues or ways to mitigate that light pollution? Our understanding is, they want all four windows on the staircase, which is really our primary concern for, to get, to maximize their natural light, but that comes at the expense of our light pollution, and so that's the one thing that we'd ask, is that there be some consideration about the four lights on the staircase. And then the other thing is, it says in the application that shrubs will be included on their side of the fence, and we've just asked that those be high enough to help minimize that light. And then we obviously intend to keep the London Plain trees healthy, and then also the existing trees that we have next to the fence. I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
This will be the last call for public comment on this item. Seeing no more hands and no comment cards, I'll give it back to you.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment on this item and move into commission discussion, and ultimately, motion regarding this use permit. Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. I guess probably another question for the applicant, if I can return them back to the dais, thank you, welcome back. I guess the question is, you know, evident that the project looks great, I'm glad to hear that there's general support, even from the neighbor that has some concerns, so I'm sure we can find, you know, I'm confident in our ability to figure this out. So my question is really, you know, what, the idea of maybe, I understand that the issue is sort of like, I understand, you know, everybody likes natural light coming in their house in the evening time, is there a solution that you know of architecturally, or if it's maybe the, like, floor lighting only in the stairwell, or something along those lines, or potentially some sort of glazing that prevents light or reduces the amount of light on the upper stories? And for me, the windows that would have the most impact would be the, over the first, you know, over the fence line, so second-story windows.
It was providing.
I'm sorry, we can't quite hear you again.
Providing, so, okay.
Thank you.
So there is two things about the setback. So this is a side setback, and we have the five-foot six, right?
Yeah.
But on the other side, they have like 30 feet to their. But on the other side, they have like 30 feet to their, you know, to their windows from the second floor to their second floor. There is more, I mean, it's, I drew a plan of this. It's maybe on the second sheet you can see, which I think will give a lot of privacy. I mean, it's not their backyard, it is their side yard, but they use it as a backyard, but they still have 35 feet setback. So I don't think the light will be intruding on their backyard. Do you see what I'm trying to say? I don't think the lighting should be disturbing to them.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, I live in a similar condition where it does actually come through, so.
I understand. If their setback was five feet, I understand. But here they have 30, they're further away. So 35 feet is plenty of space to not really have an impact for the light. Now, if we want to find solution, we kind of propose to have a screen trees or bushes planted there, and that's what we intend to do, just in front of all these windows that are by the.
The stairway.
By the stairway, yeah.
I think screening trees could potentially be.
And they have already two trees that provide a lot of screening, plus manolias that are lower. And I don't know, Mark is here, do you have any?
Yeah.
To say about this?
Yeah, I think Carol just brought up a few good points, but it was the screening trees that are already there. It's quite effective at the moment and we planned on providing pretty dense coverage in front of those four windows in particular, going up the stairwell that the trees were concerned about. So we're happy to provide any, you know, mutually agreeable solution.
Great.
We don't want anyone upset or anything, but.
Awesome.
But getting back to the, you know, the role of the windows, we have a pretty good-sized door there, like in its current form right now, like the door coming out onto the deck that we leave open for amount, just to get like fresh air and that kind of thing. And not having that door anymore, that's why we kind of wanted to go with the windows there, just in the name of like air circulation and light and everything. We just didn't want like a dark stairwell there.
Yeah.
And we don't really want to have a lot of like really bright lights there either, which I think will address the lights, the light pollution as well.
Thanks. And for the minutes they are recorded, what, can you share your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Mark Burbridge.
Thank you. Thank you, that's helpful information. Thank you.
Do other commissioners have comments or questions? Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. Since it sounds like no one else has a lot to share, I'll just quickly share my thoughts. I mean, generally, I'm supportive of this project. I don't have any concerns. It seems to meet all the city requirements and everything like that. And in regards to this particular situation with the privacy, I think I mentioned this in a previous meeting, but I'm hesitant to require anything in terms of plants. It just seems like a very tricky situation, you know? Plants behave in all sorts of ways that we'd like to control but can't. And I personally am satisfied by the applicant's desire to put in screening trees and not put super bright lights in the windows of concern. So I personally would be happy to support this project as is, but would be curious to hear what other commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. Commissioner Silverstein.
I agree with Commissioner Sillin on making any form of formal requirements on plant life. It just gets tricky. My general perspective is when it comes to obscuring windows in order to preserve light pollution on the other side, it's a zero-sum game, right? Windows are there for light to come in and we don't have one-way windows and so to whatever extent light can't go out into the neighbor's yard, light similarly can't come in. And there's a question on the relative benefits of one way or another and it's hard to get a formal answer or kind of a formal compromise with the windows themselves. I think that screening trees can be that compromise in effect where it allows the light to come from up above into the windows and then would potentially prevent light from going into the neighbor's yard. I think that from my like general perspective is I would not be comfortable requiring those windows to be opaque or obscured. I think there are other solutions that are more mutually beneficial and it wouldn't necessarily be fair to the applicant to force their own stairwell to have a lack of natural light. And I have in good faith that neighbors are going to be friendly and they will be able to communicate and not have super bright lights shining into their neighbor's backyard.
Commissioner Beruzzi.
That's kind of where I am as well, actually. It seems like there's a lot that can just be worked out in the design process through conversation. And, you know, I was thinking about the time when we had a motion detector light illuminating the side of our house where we take out our garbage and turns out that shines into our neighbor's bedroom. And so we fixed that. I mean, these are the kinds of things that can be worked out when people have conversations. So the only reason I asked about the glazing was because I was trying to understand, I mean, blinds definitely don't let light through and glazing would be kind of like in a bathroom, right? But if the idea is, I wouldn't want to put that as a requirement necessarily, I think, especially since the concern of light pollution sounds like something that would be happening at night and glazing doesn't really help with that so much. It's just a question.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Vice Chair Eric. I'll just add, I agree with commissioners and I appreciate the neighbor's concerns and I also appreciate the extensive documentation of outreach you did with all the neighbors, including actually what you sent to them and the spreadsheet with the neighbors' addresses and their feedbacks. I just appreciate the comprehensive outreach and it gives me and it sounds like other commissioners, the confidence that you really do have good intentions of working with the neighbors to have a harmonious relationship. I also appreciate the site plan drawings showing that distance on the neighbor's side and I do hope that with, there's some attenuation with the planting and with the distance as well. So just echoing the general sentiment, appreciate the work and have the confidence that you guys want to have good neighborly relations. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. I will echo a lot of these sentiments and also just note that this project removes some non-conforming portions of the existing structure, which to me at least further indicates goodwill on the part of the applicant.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks. It seems like we've all had a chance to talk, so I'll go ahead and hazard a motion. I agree with, you know, much of what was just said, so I'm sorry, I'm scrolling up to look for the address because we like to do the motion with that. Sorry, I shouldn't have, you called on me so quickly. Okay, here it is. So I would like to move to approve the use permit at 351 Barton Place with the, just the note to please work out a mutually agreeable planting plan with your neighbor. And that will, you know, not be a requirement that's like specific. We're not going to say which trees to plant or where. It's more just to kind of work out how a screening would work well for both of you, as you already have noted that you plan to do.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Question for Commissioner Farrick, was that note expected to be a part of the motion as a condition? Or was that a comment you were making as a opinion as a result of the conversation that we've had?
Yeah, I mean, I recognize that you don't want a specific plan, but that's not what this is. They have already articulated an agreement and I know a couple of weeks ago we argued over whether we should put something in a motion that's already in the thing, but, but I do feel like elevating kind of the big issues of the day in the particular cases and it's an important highlight. Like we've, many of us have mentioned, both parties, you know, the neighbors get along well, everybody's happy with. The project is the one thing that is sort of the thing that is causing some concern that the applicant is already willing to address. I guess why I would want it in the motion is that it again elevates it. I have been in a situation where it was discussed and agreed upon by the applicant, but the screening never materialized and there's not a lot, what are we going to do? You know? So I guess for me, I think it's important to just be like, this was clear at the time of passage that this is, you know, what you've agreed on.
I know I rushed you before and I don't mean to put you under pressure again. Given that you would like this to be in the motion, can I kindly ask that you state what you would like the motion to be?
Yeah, just the, to approve the use permit with a highlight or note, I'm not exactly sure how, what to call that, that, you know, a mutually agreed upon screening, you know, plan that the applicant can propose, work out with the neighbor themselves, not staff time, not us, is, you know, okay. You know, I guess it could be a condition that they do do that.
Okay, I think I'm going to turn to staff and see if that suffices as a motion and if Mr. Hoakleyner, you can maybe read back what you expect the motion to be or understand the motion to be, excuse me.
Just so to clarify, the proposed site plan already has an indication for a new screening bush to be installed in the area where the windows are. It doesn't say a specific type of bush, but anything that would go there would need to meet the zoning ordinance requirements for like fences and hedges and stuff like that. So it'd need to be kept to a maximum height of seven feet along that property line. So I think it would be, I don't think it should be up to us to make a determination on like a species that should go there, but the proposed site plan already has that information included in it.
But that's in contradiction to most all the property conditions across the city. There's plenty of small screening trees that are higher than seven feet, so.
You're correct. Depending on how it's trained, if it's trained into a hedge, it will need to meet the height requirements. If it's kept as a bush or a tree, then it could exceed that. Yes, correct, sorry.
No problem. So maybe the word tree should be placed there rather than bush because I wouldn't want there to be an interpretation that we want it to stay under seven feet when it wouldn't do the job of screening anything because the fence line's about that same
Sorry, Mr. Peralta, do you have an additional comment or Mr. Hoakleyner?
I think changing it to the tree would be sufficient. That way it could grow to, you know, whichever height that they want to have. I think that would be agreeable.
Super duper. How do you all feel about that if I modify my motion to include the, changing the already planned bush to a mutually agreed upon screening tree?
I'm getting a little hung up on the concept of mutually agreed upon. Can we just talk about a screening tree?
That's fine.
And not, and not worry about, I mean, I feel like that just give, that's, that gets a little bit complicated for my, for my taste, to require an agreement about the planting that they do on their property. Me just got a question.
Sorry. I saw Commissioner Silverstein first, so I'm going to go Commissioner Silverstein and then Commissioners, Commissioner Sillin.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate, I'm personally not comfortable voting affirmative for a motion that includes a requirement of trees or shrubbery, but if the commission wants to, then that's totally fine.
Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a question for staff, which is if a screening, whatever bush tree, whatever we call it, is in the plan, I believe Commissioner Farrick's concern is accountability, like it's there, but then it never gets planted. Is that something that the neighbor could bring up as an issue? Or it's just sort of plans can change? It doesn't mean the applicant has to put something there, correct?
So whether it is included as a specific condition of approval because it is in the published plans that you are reviewing and hopefully voting on tonight, then they would be required to put something there as their approved plans show. So there is a condition that's standard to all use permit projects, that the as-built project needs to be in substantial conformance with the approved plans.
Okay, got it. So if, even right now, if it's a screening bush, but that bush never gets planted, that would go against that condition, correct?
Correct, yes. There, the use permit projects must be built in substantial conformance with the approved plans. So if they wanted to eliminate that bush, then they would have to come back and have the plans changed.
Okay, so I think that gives hopefully all of us, including all parties involved, confidence that something will be there if it's in the plans. As far as the term bush versus tree, what I heard you say, Mr. Hoakleyner, as well as I've emailed, I think the building department about this myself in regards to something I was considering with the neighbor. Yeah, I understood the terminology to be if it's a hedge or if it's trimmed as a hedge, then it has to be under the seven feet. But if a bush could be above seven feet or a tree, like you said, depending on how it's trained or maintained, is that correct? So even a bush could be above seven feet?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I suppose I'm agnostic. We could keep bush, we could, I guess I would tend to defer to the applicant, but we could put bush slash tree if you prefer, but yeah. I'm, I think I'm on board with Commissioner Silverstein in saying I'm not, I'm comfortable requiring any sort of particular species or height, but I'm comfortable with the current language or any similar language in the plans.
Okay, I think where we are is that we have a motion on the table, so a commissioner can choose to second that motion.
Could we clarify the motion one more time, please?
Sure.
Commissioner Farrick, please.
I would like to approve this use permit, believe it or not, with the change, with a clarification that the current planting plan have a tree, a screening tree, rather than a bush that's under the fence height or a bush that is going to actually provide that screening so that the, the reason is, is that it accomplishes both things. It allows the natural light, it allows for not having window coverings or any opaque glass glazing, and it helps reduce or minimize the light pollution or light that goes into the neighboring property. So I think it's an excellent compromise myself.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Does that imply if the foliage that is planted in that location does not rise above seven feet tall, that the project, if this motion passes, that the project would be considered to be out of conformance? And if so, then I continue to not be comfortable with that language.
I mean, if you're, I'd ask the staff that, but my opinion would be, the idea would be you'd plant something that would over time grow to be higher as one, as plants and trees do. as plants and trees do. But it's a, you know, I would defer to staff for conformance with the project.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my follow-up is, given that there's already the requirement that they plant something screening there, I personally don't see the need to add incremental language. And this is similar to the conversation we had last meeting where I continued to not want to kind of necessitate extra language that's already required. And so like from a principled standpoint, I feel like the requirement is already to plant a screening plant.
Bush.
Bush, tree, or anything there. And the definition of screening, I don't know if there's a formal definition or whatever, but I don't, I personally don't see the need to kind of re-add a condition, given that it's already there, similar to how I don't think it's required for us to add an extra condition that they have a 16-foot driveway because that's already their plan.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. In principle, I would tend to agree, like I would have, you know, two weeks ago. However, the current plan says bush, and even our own staff thought that that meant under seven feet. So that would not do the thing that it's supposed to be doing. And so I think changing that word and adding the word tree to clarify that it is meant for the purposes of screening is important.
That, that's totally fine. And then in that case, from my perspective, that would be changing the proposed plan and the permit. It wouldn't be a extra condition on top of the approval. It would be changing the language of the plan to say screening tree instead of screening bush, totally on board with that.
Let's do it.
It's just not on board with the kind of like incremental seven-page list of conditions.
I don't think that's what I was proposing, but sure.
I was exaggerating.
Okay, I think this was a helpful conversation. I'm at least clear on the, what I think is the intent, but I'd like to ask staff if there's language that we can include in the motion, which would clarify that the plantings in that location are meant to be considered trees as per the city's code rather than hedges. Because I think that's what we're after here.
So through the chair, if I may, if it would be agreeable to the commission is add a condition of approval to be that the. When they submit their final building permit plans, that they change that notation on sheet four to be, plant a screening tree there rather than just a bush.
Super. So you're okay with adding a condition of approval? Wait a minute, are you really?
Would the maker of the motion be amenable to?
Well, yeah, because that's just a better way of saying what I was saying from the get-go.
Fantastic. Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner Sillin.
So I just want to say for the record that there are plenty of bushes that can be over seven feet tall, like oleander, for example, is something that I see on my street all the time. So yeah, I guess going back to principles, if the applicant wanted to put a bush, I don't see the need to change it to a tree because bushes can be used as tall screening plants. But don't let me hold this up.
I think the clarification we got from staff is that if it's notated as a bush in the plan, there is the potential that the city code would prevent it from being higher than seven feet, and therefore changing it to tree would allow additional flexibility in terms of height. Am I getting that correct?
I think I misspoke when I said that it needed to meet the fences, hedges portion of the code. So if it is trained as a hedge, and I don't think a singular bush can be trained as a hedge, it needs to be multiple bushes trained as a hedge, then that would need to meet the, the code section about the height requirements. A singular bush, if it exceeds seven feet in height, I don't think would meet that definition of hedge. So a singular bush of sufficient height would be okay.
So I made a motion. Is there anyone who would like to second?
I'll second it just so that we can put the shrubbery to rest.
Okay, we have a motion or a, and a second. Before we vote, are there any comments from the commission? Commissioner Silverstein.
I will ask one more clarifying question, if I may.
Please go ahead.
The condition does not prevent the applicant from, from putting in a bush that grows to a screening height, if in case that helps you feel any better. It's, it's that it's a screening, like it, can you, you had the, the right read back. And what I'm trying to help Commissioner Sillin know is that, yes, it might be a bush as long as it sort of present, presents as a tree.
Wouldn't the term screening bush do that?
But so would several trees, and I don't want to dictate that it has to be a bush, and then I don't want it to imply that it needs to be short.
In, in the interest of hopefully helping, Mr. Hoakley, I think had some helpful language, that when the final plans are submitted, that the notation be a tree, can we have that notation be bush or tree?
Sure. So the proposed condition to be simultaneous with the submittal of a complete building permit application, the applicant shall revise plans showing that a screening bush or tree be planted on the right side elevation on sheet four, to the review and approval of the planning division.
Thank you. Okay, for the avoidance of doubt, I'm going to ask if you are happy with that motion.
Yes. Is, is that different than what you'd read out before? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, it's not different. Are there any other questions from the commission? Okay, then we will move to a vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That makes six yeses, one absent. The motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you for being here, and we thank you for your patience. Okay, we will now on, move on to item F2, a use permit for Spiffy Pottery Studio at 1919 Manalto Avenue. And with this item, the planning commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit for a change of use from a dance studio to a pottery studio for a tenant suite within an existing commercial building that is substandard with regard to minimum parking requirement in the CMU Neighborhood Mixed Use Zoning District at 1919 Manalto Avenue. The proposed pottery studio is considered a special use and is conditionally permitted subject to a use permit. The planning commission may determine this action is categorically exempt under sequel guidelines, section 15301's class one exemption for existing facilities. Sorry. Mr. Chan, are there any updates from staff?
Thank you, Vice Chair Eric. There are no additional updates from staff at this time, and staff has also not received any additional public correspondence. Staff would like to note that the applicant and business owner, Jeffrey Liang, is here to provide a few opening remarks before your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Liang, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeffrey, and I'm currently applying a use permit for Spiffy Pottery Studio at Willows. And please, do you have any questions, feel free to ask me, and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. At this time, do commissioners have any clarifying questions? Yes, Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks. This is a question for staff. I'm, maybe I just missed it, but I'm confused that the correspondence we got was to be against nighttime operations when it was clear in the application that that is not what's being proposed. Could you just clarify what, what, what the dynamic is there? Like, is, is the studio going to be operating between midnight and 6:00 AM?
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. So when this application was first received by the planning division, it originally involved a use permit request for business operations between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM, so those midnight business operations. However, in the course of this application's review and with the applicant's review of further neighborhood correspondence, the applicant decided to rescind or retract that use permit request in respect of those neighbor correspondence. So the neighborhood initially received a public notice, we call it like the seven-day initial preliminary application notice, to let them know of the application. And at, at that time, it did involve that request, but subsequent to that, it was removed. So that's when the correspondence was received.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on that. So this noticing requirement, is that specifically because of the late hours, is that, is that what triggered it? Or would it, would there still be a notice required even if it was regular business hours?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. So that initial seven-day notice is what we call internally, it's a courtesy notice that our department offers. It's not required, it's just something that we do as an additional form of public outreach.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I think it's a question for the applicant. I'm not super familiar with how pottery studios operate. So during even, you know, later hours, like I noticed, some of the days, it might be open till 11:00 PM or 10:00 PM. What type of activities would be taking place during those late evening hours? And what level of noise would you expect from, from the outside?
So usually, when, when the time comes to that late in the, in the day, usually it will allow only members, so no students, membership only. And through the membership programs, we are definitely communicate with them about noise, and specifically, it's surrounded by residential area. And then the nature of doing pottery, it's already don't make a lot of noises because the machines and the tools didn't make noises at all. So we're not really worried about making noises, although some residents around the neighborhood are, but we're confident enough to stay quiet and not disturb anyone.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Commissioner Silverstein.
I have a question for the applicant. Sorry, before you sit down. Out of curiosity, was the original request to be possibly open between the hours of eight, of midnight and 6:00 AM for a functional use? And, and now something that you were planning on doing needs to be changed? Or was it just for convenience that you wanted to be open 24/7? I guess follow-up question is, given that now you would not be able to be open between midnight and 6:00 AM, does something need to change in terms of your plans? Or when you would either receive deliveries or do work yourself, does that change?
So my original intention is based on my experience working as pottery or as instructors, especially in the city, San Francisco, sometimes we do provide 24-hour access because some people, like those night hours, they love to make pottery at night after work, or, you know, after all the activities. So we, we were want to accommodate those people. But then we decided to not to do that for the moment because we afraid that introduce too much business hours in that quiet community-centered neighborhood might have some trouble with the residents. So we decided to take it slow and see what's everyone's opinion on it. And if there's a demand and people really wanted to go midnight and do pottery at that hours, then I'll pursue that permit.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have another follow-up question for staff, or not a follow-up question, independent question. It's my understanding that even independent of the minimum parking requirement for this location, it would still need to get a use permit. I'm curious as to whether or not the parking and circulation analysis that was conducted and is part of the staff report would have similarly been required work in terms of staff time if the location were conforming in terms of their parking available.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Yes, the transportation division would still conduct the same level of review and scrutiny for this project.
Are there other clarifying questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I will turn to Mr. Turner for public comment. Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item and open the comment period?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Eric. At this time, if you would like to give public comment, and you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, click star nine on your phone. Or if you are in person and would like to give public comment, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. We'll give it a few moments here. I do not have any hands raised at the moment, and do not have any comment cards.
Okay, then let's please close public comment, and we will move back to the dais for commission discussion, and ultimately a motion to, a motion on the use permit. Commissioner Beruzzi.
I think this looks like a great project and should enhance the neighborhood. And I'm curious to hear if other people have similar feelings, but if there's not a ton of objection, I'd be ready to make a motion. Sorry.
Commissioner Farrick.
Echoing Commissioner Beruzzi's comments, I'm very excited that this will be opening. My only worry is you have so many people on the list, I'm afraid I will not be able to get into a class, but I wish you all the success. I'm excited to support this project.
Commissioner Silverstein.
I move to approve the use permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the use permit. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners before we move to a vote? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yeah.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That makes six yeses with one absent, the commission, oh, sorry, the motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, with that, we will move on to section G of our agenda, regular business, and item G1, review of the draft 2025 Planning Commission meeting dates. I believe staff has some brief introductory remarks.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Eric. So before the commission is staff's proposed draft calendar for the 2025 calendar year. And so at this time, as a regular business item, the commission can identify any dates that may prove potentially problematic for a quorum, for staff to evaluate and then finalize. Commission may also find a more formal recommendation or motion second to approve the calendar, that's not required, certainly can take individual feedback, and staff can finalize. We would like to, to finalize it tonight, though, or get your feedback tonight so we can finalize it this week, begin publishing the dates on the citywide calendar. As the staff report notes, staff does take into account a number of factors when preparing this calendar, and so just a couple.
this calendar, and so just a couple factors. The planning commission is charged with meeting two, twice a month, excuse me, on Mondays, and so we do try to keep a even rhythm of every other week and try to avoid back-to-back meetings. We also take into account city holidays and other celebrations and religious holidays and observances, and we look at scheduling conflicts with other commissions. So we also do share meeting dates with the library commission, and so we look into that as well. So the calendar before you represents staff's evaluation of all those constraints and what we believe is a kind of a best-case calendar for 2025. So with that, happy to answer any questions, have a discussion about the calendar, note any potential issues or quorums. If we did forget about a, a local school district break or school break, let us know. That'd be helpful, but we do, we do try to factor those in.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. I will just add, this is my second time reviewing the meeting dates for the upcoming year, and it's a little bit weird in that we're discussing schedules on the dais, so I just ask the public's patience because due to Brown Act regulations, we can't discuss them anywhere else. So that being said, I would encourage commissioners, you don't need to, you might not know what your plans are. If you do know, you may have a conflict, or if you think other commissioners may have a conflict, this is a good place to discuss that so that we don't run into quorum issues in the coming year. I'm sorry, Mr. Prada, is public comment?
It would be, it would be a good idea to take public comment, yeah.
All right. Before we do that, are there any clarifying questions from commissioners?
Okay, then, Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions for public comment on this item and open the comment period?
Yes, thank you. If you would like to give public comment on this item, please raise your hand on Zoom or click star nine if you are calling in, or hand me a comment card if you are in person. Give it a few moments here. And I do not have any hands raised or any comments, comment cards.
Okay, then let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the dais for commission discussion, comments, or questions. Commissioner Silverstein.
I would not be here August 11th.
Commissioner Beruzzi.
I might not be here the last one in August, the 25th. But I just want to also say that I appreciate the attention to not conflicting with high holy days in September.
Commissioner Sillin.
I want to say thank you for preparing the calendar. I just checked against this school calendar, and that was all fine. I have nothing else planned, so I'm good. And if any other commissioners want to make changes, I would just be going up against the school calendar, which early August is zero. Otherwise, I don't have any plans currently, so I am very flexible.
No issues here.
No, no issues, but just to be transparent, no, no proposed changes, but just to be transparent, October 6th is a lunar calendar holiday, so that's a conflict for me, as well as a personal conflict December 15th.
Okay. I don't have any further comments. I would like to thank staff for putting the calendar together. I imagine it is no easy feat. Without being presumptuous, I don't think that we require a motion to shift anything. I think we're looking pretty good. So I'll leave it there. Okay. We will close that item and move to informational items. Mr. Prada, would anyone from staff like to provide an update on any informational items or the upcoming planning commission meetings and agendas?
Yeah, thanks for that opportunity. So the second meeting in December, the 16th, where staff is going to be canceling that meeting, so we'll send a cancellation notice this week, just given how things shook out with projects towards the end of the year. There's a number of projects that are pending but not quite ready, and so we'll cancel that meeting. And then we'll look at starting to populate the calendars for the, for the January 13th and 27th meetings, which we just talked about this evening. So we don't have any specific items for those yet, but as we go through December, we'll be identifying those and look forward to the commission work next year.
Okay. Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Silverstein. As evidenced by the two public comments today and some emails that we've received as part of the planning commission, there's a lot of conversation around the project at AD Willow. Does staff have any understanding as to the role that the planning commission would have over, on, on this project? Are we in the next phase? Is this a six-month?
I'm going to stop you right there. As a non-agendized item, we're, we're not going to be able to discuss that and those specific questions this evening, so I apologize.
Fair. Is, as a, as a follow-up, and feel free to not answer this question, is there an expectation that this project would be agendized in the near future for the planning commission? And if that's not a question that you're happy to answer, then that's fine as well.
Yeah, I don't have a schedule at this time. Yeah, thanks.
Pardon me. Are there any other questions? Okay, do any commissioners want to bring up any additional informational items? Okay, well, then it seems that this will be our last meeting of the year, so I'd like to wish my fellow commissioners and staff and the public a happy holidays and a very happy new year. I will adjourn this meeting. We will see everyone in January. Meeting is adjourned at 8:20 PM.